It is 7:01. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But, uh, agenda approved. Uh, first, we will have presentations, proclamations, and visitors. We have some special guests to help us tonight with our, Pledge of Allegiance. We'd like to welcome the Boy Scout Pack 405. Go ahead and start your, your thing. Do you want us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, everyone stand please. Oh, when you present the place. Nope, they can come forward.
No, they have to do it together.
Oh, they have to do it together? Okay.
There's, there's a process.
Alright, we're gonna get ready for the colors. Everybody wants to stand? Attention. Forward march. All. Please prepare to pose the colors.
Pledge of Allegiance, dear flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation undergone an invincible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here, and they promised to help me up. So first, I'd like to invite your, I don't know what you call your position.
I'm the Cub Master.
Cub Master to come and say three words and talk to us about your troop.
So we are Almsville Cub Scout Pack. So when they were kindergarten through fifth grade, they're referred to as a pack. So, um, and then after that, they get to graduate into a troop. So we are Almsville Pack 405. We are currently meeting down here at the Yellow Church, and we have roughly 24 kids in our program at the moment, and always looking to add more if they want to come and join us and have some fun. Um, again, we serve kids between kindergarten and fifth grade, and it's part of our, one of our core tenets is duty to country. And as part of that, we learn a little bit about people who run our country, whether that be at a city level or a state level, or the police department, fire department, etc., things like that. And we just want to thank you for inviting us here tonight so we can learn a little bit more about who runs our city and how it gets done. Thank you.
For coming.
Thank you. So this is where you guys get to ask us any questions. So I hope you guys have questions for us. Okay, well. You were next. What was your name? Oh, what's your name? Levi? Okay. Why did I decide to be government? You mean, why did I decide to be part of the city council? So four, five years ago, I got really sick, and I was home watching Netflix, because I was on the sofa for like four months, and I kind of got bored. And when you get really sick, you start to question things. Am I being a good person? Am I doing everything to be a good worker and a good, uh, community, um, volunteer? And when I reflected on that, I said, no, I wasn't. So I figured out, how can I get involved? And one of those was being involved in city council. And that's how I got started. I don't know about any of the other counselors, if they want to share.
I'll share something. So the reason why I decided to become city councilor is I wanted my voice to be heard. And the best way to have your voice heard is to run for a community situation. So if your voice isn't being heard outside, I'm on inside.
Um, my name's Nico, uh, one of the city counselors, and, um, I've been doing this for a little while. I've done it since, I think, 2009. So it's been a little bit since I've been involved, but, um, I think the main motivator for me in being involved in our community has just been, I've had so many good people, neighbors, people at my school, you know, teachers, janitors, everybody. It's kind of been supportive of me in the past, and I felt that there wasn't a better way for me to be able to, I guess, kind of give back and to be supportive than to be a part of, you know, the council. And it's not always a fun or exciting or super cool job, but we all strive to do good for our community, and we work together to try to do that. So I think that's what drew me to be a part of the council.
Do you, do you remember your question now?
I love all of it. Um, I think my new favorite part is the statues that we have out in front of City Hall. But I really do like to take walks, so that's why I say like all of it, the parks. We have good parks.
What about you guys?
I really like the park down there on Fifth.
I also like the pizza.
That's a win.
Alright, um, I don't remember, um, what do, what do I like? Like, what's my favorite thing? I like to sleep. So we all have real, like, most of it, I think, I think Della's the only one. Are you retired now?
I am.
So the rest of, so we all have jobs outside of this. Uh, we volunteer our time, and it takes up a lot of hours away from our family life and our free time. So when we try to get naps and rest, those are really important to us. Um, I don't remember. Well, I'll let someone else answer that.
It involves doing a lot of research into things that the city needs and making sure that we listen to citizens. So we try to meet with them at different times and have meetings to make sure that we're making the best decisions we can for the city.
Second.
I think it's fun and stressful at the same time. We have a lot of community events, and the town, uh, we have 4,200 people in this town, and 4,200 people that will call and email us asking questions about why they didn't like something or what they thought was amazing. So there's a lot of pressure, but we do have good events.
That's a good question.
My favorite kind of pizza is pepperoni, olive, and mushroom on cauliflower crust.
Maybe in bacon and pineapple.
I'll second that one. With extra cheese.
To work with the county. Oh, is that what you're asking us to do, is to work with the county?
That's awesome.
Alright. Okay, you back here? As, as mayor or as just council? I haven't been mayor very long. I don't know yet. I think, actually, I think this might be it. This is the first time we've had kids come and sit down with us. I, I just went to the elementary school, and I'm gonna go visit the high school and junior high. I really, I had five kids in my house. So, yeah, I did see. So I love being involved with you guys. Who? Right here. No, not, not for me, no. In fact, um, I'm the second female mayor in a hundred years. So the last one was in, I believe it was 1922, 24, 25? So almost a hundred years ago. And I am, I am a daughter of an immigrant family. So we grew up working the fields and farms, and we grew up very poor. And I think we've only had one person go to college. What do I do as mayor? Well, uh, I have lots of meetings with legislators, and I answer lots of emails from the community, and I ask Ron a lot of questions. We make decisions on, like, the rules. They're called ordinances for the town. We make them collectively, um, so that our town, it continues to be a great place to live. I don't make any decisions alone. We make them, and we vote on them, and you will see that later tonight. Um, and we do it as a team. What do I like about being mayor? I, I don't know yet. I think the best part is gonna be able to, to talk to people who live in town, and it probably will be my least favorite part at the same time. Kind of.
Piper. Piper.
What type of events do we have, or do we pick?
What's on the calendar?
So we have, I don't know what's on the calendar. We have the Easter thing coming up in April. Is that right?
Yeah.
Easter egg hunt, yes. So we have the Easter egg hunt, and that is free. We have that every year. And I think I went to my very first one last year, because I'm always working on that day. Uh, we have the Summer in the Park program. We have superhero carnival. We have the Corn Festival, which is amazing, right? Yes, we have the parade. Uh, we have the Saturday market. Uh, last year, we had, uh, we gave away pumpkins for the very first time. I don't think what else. Am I missing anything? Oh, Christmas in the park. How could I forget about Christmas? Yes, Santa visits. Not even a month. So, uh, I started on the first. So we had, uh, we had a mayor. We, we get to be mayor for two years, and then we have to put our name out to the community and ask people if they want us to be mayor. And the town chooses who gets to be mayor. Go ahead. Here. So, um, we talk a lot about different rules. We talk about money and things the city needs to buy, and we make decisions on that. I think it's the best way to describe it. Go ahead. That's a really complicated answer.
That starts with the planning commission, and they go through the rules and determine if it's the right kind of building and thing. And then if there's a problem, it comes to us.
Go ahead. You back here? Yeah, you. I just answered. Okay, you had another question? That, that is a wrong question.
Good idea.
We, we do have opportunities to, to bring in money for the community for the events. Yes, we do. But we'll take one more question. Absolutely.
Not.
Yeah. Okay. So Ron is gonna say something. Oh, there we go.
Be able to put on community events and the work that our scouts do in the community is, is vital, making those events successful.
I think Ron just said it great. So if you didn't hear, um, none of the events that we have in town can be done without volunteers, and we have, um, we've had the scout troops and the Girl Scouts volunteer, uh, the Corn Festival, and we absolutely will put you guys to work somewhere, uh, and that goes for anybody in the community. The reason our events are so amazing is because we have amazing people that live in this town, and we have amazing volunteers. There's no way that we can pull off these events without the staff and volunteers. For this age group? I have to ask Ron.
Well, I, I think at any age group, there's an opportunity to participate in events to help other kids, uh, even at your age, enjoy those events. And there's, um, there's opportunities at, uh, our summer reading program. If, uh, you want to volunteer to help, uh, other kids with their reading, or, um, or perhaps with some of the activities that they do during the park, so you can sign up to do that. Superhero Carnival is a great, uh, event, and I think you guys may have had a booth there last year, and were participating and basically set up a booth with carnival games for other kids can come and play those games. And it's really about improving the quality of life in our community and bringing the community together. Um, and that's what you guys share in. So there's opportunities at every event, and as far as community service projects, like if you actually wanted to put a project together, um, there's lots of things to do, and if, if you, if that was your focus, I'd just encourage you to come sit down with me, and we can talk about it and come up with something.
So I understand that you guys have to earn a civic badge, right? And that's why you're here tonight? We have a special award for each of you, and I'm gonna stand back up and have you guys get in the line so that we can present you with something. Don't run me over.
Back it down the way to the top there. Perfect.
That is an awesome picture.
Oh, yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah, so Levi, come on up. Just follow him, okay?
Right. I don't know what that means, being a token from the city. They put you to work.
Good thing we're always happy to provide cheerful service. What do you guys all say?
Yeah. I can ask you guys to come back up, and we can take a picture?
Can we get up front?
I don't. We've been, been through several.
I just realized that.
Do we really want to put you out in front? There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for having us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. That is awesome.
Put that up in the office. Yeah.
You guys see it?
That's cool.
I'll give them a second to. I do like the idea of having a little sign out there. It sounds.
It's actually, it's actually a good idea.
It is.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna move on. So we have to declare a vacancy for, um, our new, our unfilled city council position. And Ron, I just, we just declare it open? Is that what we do?
Yeah, basically, we're just gonna, uh, declare a vacancy on the unfilled position, and it's just a simple motion, uh, by the council.
Can I get a motion for that?
Move to approve, um, a motion, uh, stating that we have a declared vacancy on our city council this time.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes? And then, um, I think we had some intentions to appoint and fill it?
I, I think, I think they're out of town, unfortunately, from what I had heard.
Can still do.
Oh, but we can still appoint from what, I mean, we, we can still appoint, can't we, Ron, and then just administer the oath of office later?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, um, I move to approve, uh, I move to appoint, uh, Doug Cox, uh, to our vacant position on council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes? And then we will make arrangements to do the swearing-in of office with him later. Um, moving on, we have some employee awards and presentations. I believe we have the police department first. We have.
Yeah, actually, I'm extending apologies to our, from our chief tonight. Um, today he, um, fell ill in Goodmead here, and, uh, and so I'm gonna actually do our presentation. I'm glad to see that we've got a good contingent from our department here, but, um, our first award is for our officer um, of the year, and that is Officer Philip Wright. Officer Wright, if you can. And I, I know that, I know the chief had a little bit to talk about our officer, but Officer Wright is, uh, one of our really active officers. And I believe, uh, recently, I think you saved somebody's life. Is that right? Was that?
I don't think so.
That wasn't you? Was that Jones? Maybe it was Jones. Okay. Okay, okay, okay. But Officer Wright's, uh, very, very active. Well, and our officers do this so often, I, I get them, because we actually do go through lifesaving, uh, events quite frequently. Um, but Officer Wright is just a great officer. We're lucky to have him, and we're proud that he's gonna be our officer of the year. Now go save somebody tomorrow, so I'm not a, a fibber. And then, um, David's here, right? Yep, right there. Okay. Um, so our reserve officer of the year is David, uh, Castle, and I just want to talk a little bit about reserve officers, David. Congratulations. Uh, reserve officers, honestly, with a small department like ours, we really could not fully function without those who volunteer their time as reserves. And we've got some of the best reserves around, as far as I'm concerned, so we really appreciate, uh, all that they do, and thank you, Dave, for being our reserve officer of the year.
Thank you.
Alright, so our next presentation is for our overall city, uh, staff, uh, employee of the year. And, um, I just want to tell you that we have a fantastic city staff throughout all of our departments, police, public works, uh, and, and admin, and so, uh, I'm just really, really proud of the services that we provide this community. And even during the challenging times of COVID, um, we continued those services. Um, selecting an employee of the year wasn't an easy task this year, I can tell you. And, and that's really because each and every one of our staff could have just easily been standing up here. However, one name did keep standing out as we went through our selection process, and that name is Tasha Preston. Now, just a few words about Tasha. Tasha is a positive influence within our. Now, just a few words about Tasha. Tasha is a positive influence within our admin department. Um she's always happy, and she always makes other people laugh on those days when we need a good laugh. Uh during the past year, Tasha has shown her commitment to the city. Uh during several months when we had uh staff reductions, we had open staff positions, and we all had to take on extra duties, and uh Tasha personally jumped in and took some of those burdens off on me, and I could see how sorry she felt for me at times, the look on her face, and she's like, I have to help, and, and not only did she take some of that burden from me, but those other staff who had jumped in and were taking some of those duties. Um she also assumed additional duties from our finance department permanently. Um as the city grows, um it, it's difficult to keep up with all the responsibilities, and she's taken on uh some of those duties with um our AR uh AP uh projects. Um anyone who's worked with Tasha knows her work in the utility department is unmatched. Um she knows her customers, and her customers know her. I'm particularly proud that we are presenting the employee of the year to Tasha Preston. Yes, um now we're gonna go through longevity awards, and uh Officer Bird's not here. I will just say uh twenty-five years, Officer Bird was recently promoted to sergeant. And um he's been here twenty-five years, and so we're recognizing him tonight, so. We will make sure that we get him back here at another meeting. Um Colleen Rogers, who's in the audience tonight, uh this is her fifteen-year anniversary with the city. Uh I think we're, I think we're really fortunate, because we do have lots of longevity and lots of internal uh historical knowledge in our in our staff, and Colleen is retiring, as most of us know, we attended her retirement party. Um but she's in the area, and she's committed, and she said it's just free work, so. Oh, maybe, maybe I just assumed. Excellent. Uh Brandon uh Blythe is from our public works department. Uh this is his fifteen-year anniversary, he couldn't make it tonight. Um but uh I did wanna announce his fifteen-year anniversary, and we'll get him back. And then uh Philip Wright again, there he is. Uh Officer Wright, uh this is his five-year anniversary with the city. Excellent. That's everyone, thank you.
That's a nicer plaque than I got for fifteen years of state service. I got a piece of paper. Alright, so we're gonna move on. Thank you guys for your service, and your amazing dedication to the city.
Thank you.
Um we couldn't be a city without you guys. So now we're moving on to public comment. No public comments. We had our visitors. Move on to consent agenda.
Move to prove the consent agenda is presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, consent agenda is approved. Um nothing for public hearings, no old business, we do have some new business. And that is agreement for counseling or consulting services, Ron?
So before you tonight is uh is a uh personal service or professional service contract from Winterbrook Planning. And uh basically, as you know, we have a number of planning consultants that the city relies on, depending on the type of project uh that we use. Uh for most of our internal planning services, we contract with the Midwood Lamont Valley Council of Governments. Uh but usually for special projects, parks and different things like that, we hire uh different sub consultants. And that's basically what this agreement is. Winterbrook Planning uh Services uh has a lot of commercial development experience, and um we're kind of getting into the details of developing that interchange development zone, which will largely be uh a large commercial development, and we wanted to have somebody onboard to be uh the city's planning consultant that could help lead us uh through that process, because it is such a monumental area and a milestone for us, so we wanted to get it right, and just make sure we had the best uh folks that had that background and experience. This is a uh hour, hourly uh bill rate plus uh you know, time and materials, basically is what the contract is, so we're, it's not a, you know, set contract for a set amount, it's when we call them for their service, they bill us for the hours that they spend. Um most of our planning uh fees uh will get applied to an application. Uh so we'll have a little bit of their upfront cost in a pre-planning uh application process, where we have a kind of a low set amount to get people in the door and give them that uh information. We typically don't recover those fees at a hundred percent. But once we get the application in, then all the time and material is built, billed back to the client. Uh so it's just past three dollars. Um I've uh spoken a few times with Jesse, um who's one of the owners of the company, he's gonna be our, our main planning consultant. Um he's been working for a number of other cities, had great references. And uh so we'd like you to approve the contract, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Um was just there a reason why we just went with this one, and I mean, was there any other, I mean, I'm not saying that they're not the best pick, but just, you know, was, did we do it based off of maybe just portfolio of like successes that they've had, or?
Uh well, I I asked for references from people that uh we uh hold their opinion well, and these weren't people that were coming forward, I contacted different folks within the city's professional circles and said, do you know this company, and do they have a good reputation?
Okay.
And I had also gotten references by a couple of other cities um nearby that had used their services successfully. And I did contact a few other planning consultants, uh we crossed paths with a couple of them that we just weren't able to connect, because they were going in one direction, and I was going in another, and you know, there wouldn't really have been any motivation more, even if they had could offer the service, I didn't necessarily have the recommendations from people that are, were associated with, so.
And the other question I had was, do we have like a timeline that we, you know, think we may utilize them, or is it just sort of like on an ad hoc basis, we're kinda calling on them when needed?
I have appointments set as we speak.
Okay.
So if you approve the contract, we'll go through with those appointments.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
And uh just a little bit about the contract, this actually came from our legal counsel. Uh so it's our contract.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agreement for consulting services from Winterout and Brooks LLC doing business as Winterbrook Planning on an on-call basis as presented in the proposed agreement.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we move on to city administrator report.
So uh I really, this is kind of our off-reporting uh meeting, but I will let council know that uh we do, Angie and I do have several meetings set up, we have one tomorrow with Senator uh Gerard, uh which is our representative now, since we went through redistricting. And I think she's got a number of meetings set up for uh her, and maybe even some of you who are in the city legislative days. Uh and then we also have a meeting set up Friday uh to talk with uh Senator Merkley's office, Senator Wyden's office staff, and um I think our new congressional staff, USDA, there's a whole group of them. Angie initiated this meeting, and she's like, how do we get, how do we move this project forward? Now, I have a stakeholders, holders meeting that I meet bi-monthly with USDA folks, their, their head representative in our region, the director of DEQ, Business Oregon's representative. Um we have some of our consultants that join in, our engineer uh consultant on the wastewater project joins in. And uh we meet like bi-monthly, and we talk about whatever new funding opportunities are out there, where the deadlines are. They're the ones that were helping guide us through the discussion of, hey, let's try to get your application in before the end of the fiscal year, because that'll provide some benefit um to the city. And we met actually this past week, and one of the things that we discussed as a group is to initiate what's called a one-stop. And they felt that would help with our legislative effort this year. Uh typically, the capital awards are done towards the end of the legislative session. Um and so we're gonna do the one-stop in April. And what a one-stop is, is Business Oregon is kind of the entity designed to help with infrastructure funding uh throughout the state, and they administer a lot of the programs. But they put together what's called a one-stop, and they invite all of these funding agencies that have programs like the Clean Water Revolving Fund and things like that, so you're gonna get DEQ there, you're gonna get uh USDA there, and they pre-meet, and they look at the project, and they look at where is the best financing uh package. And they'll look at things like who's gonna offer the most grants, who's gonna offer the least amount of interest. And they'll put together these various proposals for the one-stop, and then we would go to the one-stop. And uh and then each of those folks would present it uh to us, and this is typically how you do an infrastructure project. Um and uh one of the things that they've suggested is, let's do this one-stop, because the dollar amounts are large. Uh even the O and M calculations, if we got the project, the sewer project built a hundred percent, the O and M raises are bill fifty dollars a month. Um and so their strategy is, let's do this one-stop, let's look at all these funding opportunities, so that everybody knows exactly what those are. And let's invite your legislative representatives, and let's invite some of the chairs of some of the committees. Um and then, of course, if you want some of your elected officials, and everybody, you'll get to see what this looks like. Um and, and that might, that might help us uh provide some additional conduit of information back to those representatives for funding. So that's kind of our strategy right now. Um we're getting ready to do in our compliance schedule for sewer, uh and I'll go through this a little bit more in the state of the city. Uh in our compliance schedule, we have a deadline to meet in that compliance schedule, and that's a twenty percent design, that's our next deadline uh up. And um uh we're actually probably gonna bring that contract back perhaps at the next meeting, so we'll have the state of the city, and there'll be some business, so it'll be a very long meeting. Bring your coffee, Mike. And uh and so, yeah, there's lots of moving parts with it, and then there's a lot of uncertainty. Uh as you know, we were just awarded the one point two and a half million dollar, one point two five million uh from our federal delegation, we don't know what that looks like, or what strings are associated with that, and so it's likely when we're done with this project, or we're ready to build with this project, we're gonna be trying to administer, you know, six or seven different grants and or contracts that are associated with all of these pools of money. And that's a lot of work, and it may be, it may be in our benefit to hire a consultant to do that as part of the project. Um we will look at seeing if we can do that, but there's some, some of the contracts will have by America uh requirements, some of them will, uh some of them have ARPA requirements, some of them don't, so uh there's a lot of moving parts, and uh even now, I think it's, it's where we're doing it, but it's, you know, it's to track all of that stuff is, is a little confusing. So that's kind of it in a nutshell with what's going on with me. Um the only other thing I have to ask the council is, I think because we've got some new council members, uh it's gonna be good for us to get into our retreat setting sooner rather than later. Um I will do an orientation meeting with our two new appointees uh as soon as I can get them scheduled. Uh but I think it would be good for us to get into that uh retreat setting, and so uh we can send out a uh survey of available dates. But I wanted to kinda ask if you would prefer to do uh one long day, maybe a Saturday for eight hours, which is typically how we do it. Um or if, you know, you wanna break it up and do a couple of weeknight work sessions, if we did that, I'd wanna do it consecutively. Like maybe a Tuesday, Wednesday night. Um or Wednesday, Thursday, something like that.
Wednesdays don't work.
Okay, Wednesdays don't work for you.
I would prefer a weekend.
I would, yeah, I would prefer a Saturday if possible, and I mean, obviously, we'll build in breaks for ourselves to where we don't yeah, you know, we'll kill each other or fall asleep, but you know.
We'll feed you, we'll feed you.
Um I think the only thing I would really ask is if we could possibly, um I know it'll probably be a part of our discussion, but if we can try to prioritize uh either um like disaster planning or public safety, because just obviously with fires, with more mass shootings, uh more natural uh disasters happening, I think that's something that, you know, unfortunately, we have to kinda, I think prioritize a little bit, you know, and you know, you can only prepare for so much, but I think whatever we can do to try to, you know, get you know, prepared and kind of revisit, you know, our emergency operations plan, I think would be important.
Yeah, so on that note, one of the things I've asked our, our chief to do is to revise our emergency planning board.
Awesome.
Um and I think we had a council member on there, right?
Yeah, traditionally, yeah.
Yeah, and so uh maybe, I don't know if you're available during days, but a- anybody that might wanna sign up for that.
Sure.
Uh but basically, what it is, is we convene, and I think that's probably the best venue to do it, because we talk about the plans in more detail.
Right.
Um but obviously, if we wanna talk about, you know, setting goals and things like that, then yeah, that, that's probably or specific things that we're interested in, we can have that discussion at the retreat.
Sounds good.
The emergency planning group uh talks about our hazard mitigation stuff, how to access grants. Um right now, I think the group is kind of informally meeting. Um uh and there, I think they're collectively working on like a uh, a grant to apply for some cameras uh in the city, because the cameras we have are kind of outdated and old. And um that's one of the things they're working on. But in addition to that, we're doing seismic analysis on the tower. Uh we're still doing that, so we're gonna revise that, revive that, we're gonna be working on that uh asset inventory, and we're gonna be working on our vulnerable citizen population um program, stuff like that, so that's the plan.
Sounds good.
The chief about that. Um okay, so we'll send out a, we'll send out a poll for some Saturdays. Um and hopefully, we can get that done sooner rather than later, and basically, I think for it is some training, because we do have some new council members, so I thought we'd do a little, some mock meeting exercises, so people start to get more comfortable with the meeting uh format, and then um uh there's some uh kind of long-term policy things we probably should just go over and talk about, and then, of course, our goals. Our goals are fairly high level, and at the state of the city, we'll talk about all of those goals, and then you'll start thinking, okay, is some, do some of those goals need to be refined, revisited? Um you know, there may be one or two goals there that we could refine into another goal um as we get more and more further and further into developing the goals and, and achieving a lot of the projects underneath them. So, okay, well, we'll get that survey, I'm happy to answer any questions. Nope, okay. Thank you.
Moving on to mayor and council. Moving on to mayor and councillor reports. I, I had a busy week last week or this last week, really busy. Um councillor Wick and our new councillor Wallace joined me at the town hall with um Wyden and Salinas. Uh and that's where we got the meeting for this Friday. Um it was just a real quick statement, thanking them for helping them with our wastewater and letting them know that we still need a lot more money. And then we have lobby day on the twenty-fifth. Think Nico and Della are going. I was able to get a couple of appointments, but most, I think we're gonna end up having to meet outside of the, the initial lobby day. You guys are welcome to come if you're able to. I made some appointments throughout the community with organizations that impact our residents. I met with the fire department, the elementary school, I'm gonna hit the other schools. I invite you guys to come with me if you are interested. Uh I have appointments set up with SIT and um the churches that help pay water bills, just things like that, just to continue to build and foster those relationships with the commu- uh organizations that service our, our community. It, it was a long week.
Actually, I forgot one thing just for councils now, that we actually are participating in the school job fair. And I think the mayor plans to be there as well, or she's gonna try to be there. And this is our first year doing it. The school's done it about three years. Uh I think three years now. Basically, they bring people from all different industries in, and the kids cycle in and you talk to them about career opportunities and uh you know, we're gonna have our police department there. One of the things that we had talked about. Um I don't know that it'll become a reality, but the chief and I have kind of even talked about putting together some sort of like a ranger program to get kids in early. And we talk about how do we, how do we get reserves built up and uh how do we get folks that'll come in and uh be officers in their own community? And that may be uh a vehicle for us to be able to do that. But we'll have public works there, we'll have admin there, we've got, you know, we'll set up a table and um anyway, you're all welcome to come. It's on February ninth. And it starts in the morning at, I think, nine forty-five, nine o'clock, and it's gonna go throughout the day, but we'll, we'll be there having fun, talking to the kids.
Oh, and I think I, we talked about doing the the OMA does this if I were mayor contest. Um and I talked to Ron about, I think, I just, I think we've done that in the past. So we're gonna go ahead and do it. Um it started in August, but it can start anytime before the deadline is, we have just enough time to hopefully get a couple entries in. Um a winner is selected from elementary school, junior high and high school. Each one is a different level of their submission. And we'll figure out a prize and and some timelines.
It's a lot of fun.
But that's, that's all I have. If anyone else doesn't have anything. Moving on to good of the order. Nothing for good of the order. Any correspondence? Well, if that's the case, then we can adjourn our very fun meeting that was delightful with the kids at seven fifty-five PM.